I'd like to call the town of Plainfield annual town meeting to order for January 28th at 6:30 1pm. And we can have our town clerk, please read the warning.
The electors and citizens qualified to vote at town meetings in the town of Plainfield are hereby warned to meet on Thursday, January 28th at 6:30 via Zoom for the following purpose. Item one, to review and accept the town department report and the auditor's report. The town website has the information listed in the calendar section to log on to Zoom dated at Plainfield, Connecticut on the 14th day of January 2021. Kevin M Cunningham for selectmen, Arthur W Gagne, selectmen, Kathy Tendrick, selectmen.
Entertain motions at this time for moderator?
I'll entertain Kevin to be a moderator.
I'll second.
Was that Don?
Don Colbella and Matt Raiden. Any other nominations for moderator? There are none.
You shut up. I just unmuted myself. Thank you very much.
It's an motion to end nominations for moderators.
Go mode.
All right, second. Tom, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all in favor of Kevin Cunningham being moderator say aye.
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 Thank you very much. If you just bear with me a minute, I'm going to make sure I pull up the, we have for you tonight, the audits report from the auditor. We also have, bear with me here, we also have the town report from all the different departments we have. So what I want to do is, if Kelly is on.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go through and I'm going to open up the auditor's report presentation from Markham. And share that with everybody, please.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to share the screen, Markham, share, there we go. Bear with me a second, I'm just trying to get this to work for us. There we go. All right, so I'll go through the town of Plainfield 2020 financial statements we have from the auditing report. It's a presentation from the previous year. And this is going to review the town's 2020 financial statements for audit and financials. And this was the presentation that was given to us by Markham. And Kelly, if you want to give any highlights here as we go through.
Um, just that the unassigned fund balance grew $8.8 million. That's one of the key points. And that represents 18.1% of our operating budget. You can see over the last seven years, the fund balance has grown.
For those who are listening, if you wouldn't mind, please muting, that way we can go through it without any. Okay.
Um, tax collection percentage per audit was 97.5%. Currently, that is what we normally collect in grant in a tax year. This is just explaining your expenditures were below appropriated. That had a bunch to do with the COVID.
We have an eighty degrees operating expenditures.
We have a water pollution control.
Mm-hmm. Um, water pollution control revenue was decreased from prior year's revenue of 1.8. Water pollution control is a separate fund from the general fund. Town's pension plan is the pension plan for the town employees currently funded at 84.33%. Most important. The town did set up an OPEB fund. Now, all municipalities have this fund, but town of Plainfield does. We're funded at 1%.
What's OPEB?
OPEB, other post-employment benefits. So if you retire, yep, you're welcome. Findings were two that we discussed and they'll be taken care of in the next audit. I can't see that one's weird.
Sorry, hold on.
That's okay.
I'm answering people to the room.
I think this was discussing about maintaining the cash in the general ledger, which we are doing now, the school department.
And these are the further findings and recommendations talking about how they like to see things go in the future.
Which has been corrected, so we should be good for next audit.
So they test some of our programs just to make sure everything's okay. And they chose the child nutrition cluster.
Correct.
And uniform guidance out it.
Hello?
Yep. So we, they were also picking other things from the town side with school readiness, municipal grants and town aid roads and auditing those as well. And so far, those have all come up fine. I guess if we have any questions at this time, if you want to unmute and ask a question, Kelly should do the best she can to give an answer.
Kevin, I'll just make a remark, just an FYI, so people know. I did confirm with the auditor that the presentation that you just went over that was given to the board of finance is going to be given to the board of ed as well, actually at their February meeting, February 10th. So it's a good piece of information because if anybody wanted to essentially review it again, but you'll also have the auditor there, that's another opportunity.
All right, I gotta do one more presentation. I'll set that up. If you have any more questions, you can continue on with the questions.
I have a question for you.
Yep.
Yeah, I understand this is, this should be in the budget. What about the old high school that's sitting up there vacant? I know that's probably in the education budget, I'm not sure. But I noticed you guys have plywooded the bottom half of the windows because vandals or whoever is breaking them out. What are we going to do with that? We're just going to let it sit there and rot down? Or are we going to do something with the building?
Um, we can talk about that at a different time. This is really the annual report, talking about what happened at the, of the annual findings from the auditor.
Well, no, I understand that. But this also would coincide with that because we had to spend money out of the budget to do, at least put the plywood up. And we're spending money to keep the building up. So I'm assuming that would be in the budget, probably under general funds or maybe unrestricted funds. That's, that's my question. What are we going to do? So we can lower these costs and lower the taxes a little bit for everybody around. And to maybe direct our funds a little bit better, so we don't have so much unrestricted funds, we have more appropriated funds.
Well, we're talking to the board of finance and having a plan to where we go forward from this point on. So we did spend a small amount of money just to board it up for this year. And to get to the next level of what we can do. So we do, we have to do a meeting with Tom, we'll be talking about some things like that for future plans.
Well, that's, that's my point because the building has been sitting there a long time. And as a town, I think we should do something with it. Either take a picture, knock it down, sell the parts, or do something with the building. I don't know if the police station, for example, they're, they've been screaming about getting a new police station. I don't know if that building would be viable enough. I have no idea. But to, I notice, I know this is a financial and about the town's funds in the audit. But I would rather, but I, but this, this, all of this coincides with the audit and how those funds are spent. All right, so that's something we definitely need to look at because that building's been standing there a while unused, ever since they built the new high school, from what I understand. So that's something that needs to be addressed, especially the unrestricted funds. I saw the amount of that and that's, that's or unappropriated funds. That's not good. We should have accountable for every, for every penny in here, not just a big fund that says un, or something that's not appropriate. You know, there's monies for this, there's monies for that, but we got a whole big cash over here for, we don't know what to do with. And we're going to use it for whatever we need to use it for. I think that money needs to be addressed and I think it needs to be used and appointed to particular programs in this town. And that every penny should be accounted for, not just say, well, this is a big fund and we got money, we don't know what to do with. We should find something to do with it. There's plenty enough in this town to do with that amount of money to either straighten it up, renovate it, or whatever we're going to do in this town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would ask that we continue the conversation at some other time with the chairman of the board of finance. And you can do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to see if we can go with the next shared screen. And here we go. And this is a report that we put together for all the town departments. And see if it works. It does. And I'll let you take it away, Tom, if you want.
Yeah, I also know we have some, some employees of our town represented on here, so certainly they can chime in because they can speak the best of their particular department. I will mention some of the highlights for the board of finance as I reflected in my report. For this past fiscal year, we had a total of 17 meetings. And unfortunately, we had to start going virtual due to COVID at the tail end, but that was certainly a learning experience for all of us. And we've managed to cope with it and been doing that for quite some time. We also, at one point, had to replace one of our positions. So we had a vacancy for an alternate and we had filled that seat that was back in November of 2019. The reality was, is looking back on the past year, the most challenging, of course, was at the end of the fiscal year, dealing with COVID. We had never done a virtual budget season before. So between, you know, going by the restrictions and the guidance by the state and trying to figure out how do we get through the budget season in a non-conventional way that we've never done before was, was certainly a learning curve for all of us, for myself, all the board of finance members, Kevin, the board of selectmen. But we got through it and managed to pass a budget with a zero mil increase with our mil rate being at 28.33. And a total budget of $48,528,552. And as was mentioned already by Kelly, the firm that we've been going with is Markham LLP, which did this past year's audit. Those finances are of course reflected in that report. My hope is that the citizens, not just here, but as many as possible had access to this report, both from hard copies, if they prefer hard copies, available at the town hall and then also online, the report. But the breakdown, you know, what we just went over with Kelly was of course the summary, the abbreviated summary that was given to the board of finance. But the actual breakdown, penny by penny, exactly where all the money was is reflected in those financial statements, which is in the report. So I highly encourage, again, if you haven't already, to please look over that. And just remember that this is, you know, we, this is an opportunity to ask questions, make comments and recommendations, as we had from a gentleman here. We certainly like that feedback, but just know that it doesn't end here, meaning that whatever action we take tonight doesn't mean that, you know, that's it, you know, it's done. Please reach out to myself and the board of finance. Please reach out to Kevin and the board of selectmen if you have other recommendations and specific questions relating to the financial statements and the reports here. Because again, we appreciate that feedback and we need to always look at ways we can improve this for the future. Because now that we're back in the swing of things, we're going to be doing this on an annual basis. As some of you might remember, this was something that was started a couple of years ago during Kathy Tendrick's time. We hadn't done an annual report, actually published one and had the meeting for quite some time. So it was, I think it was definitely time to get back on track with that, according to our town charter. So I like that we're back into doing this because it's important to take a little bit of time to look over what we have accomplished in the past fiscal year. And again, what we can do better and improve upon in the next coming year.
So if Kelly or anybody else has anything they'd like to add, certainly is open to that.
I just wanted to note that the audit was completed this year in a timely manner, so that was beneficial to get the annual report completed.
For those people, as Tom was saying, if you're looking for the information, the full packets are available at the town hall, online as well. So if you wanted to go either to Facebook or onto the town website, there, there are links there to get to that.
Okay.
Is somebody trying to add something? Please be sure we're on mute. That helps us out so we can continue on. Yeah, somebody was definitely.
The only other two things I'll mention as far as, I look at them as accomplishments, some, some things that were long overdue that we had to tackle that the board of finance had reviewed and of course we supported, was the highway roof. That was a long discussed safety concern for quite some time. So it was great that we finally acted on that and finally have had the highway roof addressed. And then also starting the process for the jail cell update. We of course did that towards the end of the fiscal year. And I haven't gotten any recent updates, but I think it should be coming very close for the jail cell update to be getting completed.
And this is true. Tom, do you want me to continue on with the slideshow so we can, if there's any question?
Certainly.
So every year we ask, every year we ask all the departments to send us a report to help people understand what happened in each of the areas. So this is that result of those reports. Obviously, the board of education has given us some information about their, their report.
And Kevin, as we're going to the departments, as I mentioned before, Kelly, of course, already touched on finance department, but we do have some other department heads and representation on this meeting. So, you know, as we're going to those departments, if they'd like to chime in and add any bullet points because they know their department the best, we can certainly entertain that.
I don't think Mr. Yellen is on here at this moment, but I can say that during the storm Isaiah's, I was definitely at the emergency operations center and saw the efficiency of how it worked. And very helpful because it worked back and forth with our police and our highway department to help for outages and support throughout the town. So I thought it was a very good operation. And we still work on a updated basis to try to figure out better ways to run things and work with local support systems like Red Cross. And we continue to monitor, you know, ways to update the, the ways we're working right now. So in emergency, we can be prepared. There's definitely weekly interactions we have every Wednesday at 2:30. We are talking to the local regional emergency management group for region four. And we take that information and we try to figure out the best course of action based on the changes. Like as an example, you have the testing, which has been going on for a little while and they've opened up more sites. We are working also in helping out elderly to try to get signed up for the, the vaccine as it, as it comes in. And we're still on a list waiting for our call in. So we'll continue to monitor those changes and relay that information to the public as it comes up. And of course, they're always looking for volunteers to help out. So the WPCA department is working, we do have a little bit of work that we do in Sterling, but most of it's in Plainfield. And still working and doing more upgrades as we go because some of these, some of these plants are older and need some update, update and upgrades. One of the things we found out through that storm Isaiah's was that we had some older generators that needed to be replaced. So as we're going through it, this year's budget, we're working on how to replace those on top of, by age. And we're working on it as, as we speak.
Excuse me, about that?
Yes.
Is there a, is there a maintenance program for those generators in, in the, in the budget? Because if you buy a new generator and let them sit, they're going to do the same thing the other ones did. You got to keep them running, you got to keep them updated, you got to keep them maintained. Is there something in that budget for that?
Yes, there, there is a program which they go out and they do the testing on a regular basis. And so that's now why we're at this point where I'm having to replace, because some of them were like 30 years old. So we, we do need to replace. So we're working.
I get that. That's good.
Yep, there is a maintenance program right now.
Very good. Now, with the generators that we're going to replace or have replaced, has all that been taken in consideration, not just a maintenance program, but to prevent corrosion? I know it's all part of a maintenance program, but there's a lot of things that get overlooked because they're just, well, it's there, it's been there for 100 years, it's not going to go anywhere. And then one day it just rots right off or something breaks, you know, and I know that's all part of maintenance. But sometimes a little, the little things get overlooked. So is there, is there, is there, is there a redundant system to back up the backup, you know what I'm saying? So if somebody goes in there to do the maintenance job, then somebody has to go in there and check the maintenance job to make sure it's well. And it's, and there should be a maintenance job on a generator at least once a month. You should crank those things up once a month and then check everything out and then go on your merry way. That's what I'm saying.
That's exactly what they have in place already. They do a checklist and they also do an evaluation. The evaluation says what level of need of care is going to be having, be on the next one. So they monitor every month, they test it, run it, and they do an evaluation.
Sorry for that. I'm a maintenance mechanic. It's what I do for a living. You know, I fix, again, I build conveyors, I do all kinds of happy stuff. So when you talk about something like that, it's like, it's like a needle going like this to my brain. So yeah, maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. I've been doing that for a lot of years, so. Please excuse me.
So we come into the finance department, I think Kelly can speak a little bit about that.
The finance department. You can see that we had some capital projects this year. One of the projects was the police department, the jail cell replacement. The bid price of that was $192,000. That is under construction right now, shall be completed by the end of this year. Another project was the highway roof project that was completed in fiscal year 2020. The cost of that project was about $175,000. And then also there was some pool renovation projects that were completed in fiscal year 2020. Those are listed. The discussion about COVID, COVID was a big part of this year financial. We had refund from FEMA for some of our purchases that we, for the board of ed and the town. We have received the refunds, so we had able to reimburse the fund balance $50,000 that we had to contribute towards the additional education. I guess it was for their wifi for the children. So we were able to refund that cost of $50,000. And also this year, the board of finance approved the 2% of the education budget that is not spent in a fiscal year to be set aside. So the following year, these funds can be used for the education, board of education. The board of finance will vote on that and approve it as there are requested. And I guess that's about, that's about it for the finance for the year.
I believe we do have Mary Ellen on here for the assessor's office, if she's still here.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, so. All set?
Yep, we're here.
Okay, so I have a comparison of the 2018 grand list compared to the 2019 grand list. We did see an increase of $11,666,215 in assessment. The total number of accounts, which is real estate, 6,279, personal property, 890, motor vehicles, 14,811. I have the top, top 10 taxpayers. I'll just read their names, Lowe's Home Center, Greenleaf Power, Connecticut Light and Power, Plainfield Renewable Energy, PPF We, 85 Musa Pond Road, ORL Plainfield LLC, Connecticut Water Company LLC, Yankee Gas Services, Plainfield Park Aid and Lathrup Medical Center. And then I go through a couple of benefits that the assessor's office deals with, which is the elderly homeowners, rental rebate, exemptions for veterans, blind, totally disabled. And then some important dates, some of these benefits have start dates and end dates. And then that pretty much covers it for my, my page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if you ever do want to follow up, you can go into the Plainfield website and put a question over to us. That's fine. Or you can call directly to the town hall. And again, the fire marshal, I don't believe is on tonight. And he's been extremely busy also working with us for the COVID issues on top of being a fire marshal. And for those who don't know, he will be leaving us as a full-time fire marshal after next week. And it's Karen on. Saw you earlier Karen, are you there?
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I wasn't expecting to talk, so I was like, ooh. Collections were basically the same as last year. The only thing I, not sure if we. Is there another page to this Kevin?
Could be.
I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
There you go. It has sewer assessment as well as delinquent account info.
Right. And I believe my, my collection rate was the 98.5 that Kelly was saying earlier. My only biggest thing this year was, or last year I should say, was our credit cards. We are getting a lot of people paying with credit cards, which is great and it worked wonders through COVID. But that's really the biggest thing. Everything else kind of stayed the same. And considering they moved our due date by three months, we still stayed on target, which was wonderful.
So there's some important dates to remember.
Yep, these are all, I just did a little breakdown of my calendar of what I do. As you can see, July 1st, first half of real estate, do your personal property. August 1st, last day to pay. September is when I get my tax sales stuff or the marshal stuff. Again, this year is totally different because of the COVID and due dates moved around. Then I do collect sewer assessment in October. January, we get ready for our second half that's due. And in a normal year, last day to pay is February 1st. And then I get ready for my start of new bills. I do my means in May and then start preparing for a collection for July.
Thank you.
And that's about it.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Next. P and Mary Ellen's on. Mary Ann, you were there?
Yeah, I'm here Kevin.
All right, thank you.
In addition to the written narrative provided for the report, I just wanted to say that even with COVID and when town hall was closed and semi-open, our office still remained consistently busy, which was a good thing. And we were able to service customers, residents, developers as we would have had we been open the normal hours, which I think is a really, it's really beneficial and it, and it bodes well for the town.
I think one of the highlights that you can, I would point out would be definitely the town engineer. Through this past year, as part of this report, it's been an essential part of what we do because we're working so diligently with different projects. So you'll see the town's MS4 permits are an important stage in that. And so far we've done very well, working to the next step of that. So invaluable resource for our town engineer.
Absolutely.
And as you can see on the bottom, you can see that there's, there is no stoppage in work, even though we have COVID going on. We've tried to do the best we can with working through some of those issues with still staying open and maintaining curbside service if we had to. And so far that's worked, that had worked early, early on very well. So. And if you have a question about this afterwards, you can always call in to talk to any of the members there. Thank you. And now for your next hat.
Economic development. This department is really, I think, quite active, even though it's a very small department in promoting plain field and responding to business questions, requests, et cetera, getting information out there. The economic development department also disseminates information on benefits for businesses looking to come into town. For example, the enterprise corridor zone benefit, which is unfortunately due to sunset in June, at the end of June next year. But that has been a great incentive and it has proven to be extremely beneficial to the town. And it has, has brought businesses in. And we're working on an alternative to that right now. But the economic development department and the economic development commission, they're trying to implement their economic development plan that they started during this fiscal year here that we talk about tonight. And it was adopted in July of last year, which is a three-year plan. It's an extremely ambitious plan, but we are working on accomplishing the goals and objectives outlined in that plan.
Okay, thank you. So as a board of selectmen, we've been meaning to promote as much as we can in the town and work on supervising the affairs of the town. We have been working on a very big project lately, which is, we tried starting it last year and just getting around to it at this point because it's so, so encumbrousome. It's, it's, it's the ordinances and we will be continuing that work as we go. But we're encouraging all of the processes to go through. So if we're looking for line item transfers, we'll put them in a meeting and ask for the board of finance to continue on with them. In the meantime, what we've done so far is review, reviewed the applications for the full-time finance director. We did have the retirement of the long-term, longtime town clerk Luisa Tracus and replaced with Barbie Garden. Interviewed new legal services and hired Shishman Shapiro. And obviously working to work with the, all the, all the things that happen on a regular basis. Well, I actually met with the GNW railways group and they've been working with the town of Plainfield. We do have a meeting, believe it or not, I think it's the first week in, maybe the last week, February, talking about Little Bridge Road and, Little Bridge Road and actually getting the, the arm in place over there. So we're meeting with the state of Connecticut to do a connection on that. We tried to have an advisory building committee. They just started up now. And there was a census 2020 committee, but there's just so much, we didn't have a lot of volunteers, Tom. Pretty much a couple of us. But we did try to promote it as much as we could on the Facebook page and website to make sure people know that it's not that hard to go online and do your census. We did, this is something I definitely want to mention, the local realtor that we've now worked with for the iPark lots has been fantastic. I just talked to Mr. Lyman today about that and saying that his realtor that has been working with the town of Plainfield came again. That's why you might see tomorrow night, there's a special board of select meeting to set up a, another meeting for a town meeting because we just got an offer for sale of two more lots. So they've been doing a great job and I think that was a great way to go with that. So we've been doing upgrades and as we, as you can see for the town pool, unfortunately, two weeks after the upgrades to the town pool occurred, that's when COVID hit and we had to shut things down. So we're still looking to ways to better market if we do reopen. I do feel that the state of Connecticut will be working over the next few months to implement ways to go to a different level, whether it's 2.2 or whether it's three, and we'll go from there as to how we were able to reopen and when. We work on cataloging the trees that we have that in working cooperation with every source as to which trees that they're going to be taking down and which ones we have. And we have our, we'll get to that discussion a little later. But basically they're doing a great job of taking care of the trees and as they come in, being called, tagging them for unsafe and taking them down. We added a Nixle system, which, which you probably were part of tonight. But Nixle systems help to inform the public of the town meetings and events that are happening going on. We're online on our website. Currently there's a Nixle link. If you have a railroad issue, they report it, how to do that, how to promote businesses up in the front of the website. You talk about the new businesses that are there. So with that discussion, I should also mention that we're working on it with a company to create a new town website, a little more interactive and easier to use for the public. So that'll be hopefully coming up within the next couple of months. And I'll share that with the department heads as it's coming up where I want their input to make some changes. And still working with different union contracts. I had a negotiation today, have a couple more tomorrow. So hopefully get those done pretty soon. And we're trying to put the town budget together, giving more recreational activities and supports to the town. That's something that if we continue on doing what we've been doing so far and watching our pennies, we'll still be able to promote different things that are going on in town. And try to get a second year in a row, we have a zero mill increase. Tom and I talk on a regular basis about how we can, how we can work together to do that. So, and I appreciate that and I appreciate the board of ed actually coming to the table with that discussion. So we'll, we'll try. Working with尼扣 transportation, which is now in service. So that's, that's great. It also ties a link back to the southeast of Connecticut and it goes all the way down the coastline if you needed to. We know the COVID times are knocking those numbers down. We anticipate the numbers to increase as we go. And looking to, I continue the discussion of PBA, spoke to them again today about things that they're looking for. It's, it's difficult in COVID, but we're still going to keep on talking and seeing what we can do to promote the town business. Let's see, there are a couple more announcements coming up and we just mentioned one that could happen within the iPark for other businesses coming in. And if you take a look at the planning of zoning, you'll see what's going on. So that gives you an idea. I was trying to bring back a five-day work week. That's all to be discussed, I guess. So we'll, we'll talk about it. And I did, I do meet with Ken DiPietro on a weekly basis to try to talk about different things that are, that are active and going on. And Tom and I and Ken have spoken in the past with Kelly. And we try to keep those discussions continuing so we have an idea where we're going to be for the next year and how things are going on. So you don't get surprised about something happen. And we're talking about, you know, continuing on the interaction with all of our programs we have with the PBA Pride in Plainfield, whether it's the parade itself, bike night, we're trying to continue those conversations, the veterans, the coffee house, to help them out and definitely the seniors of the senior center. Because once we get through COVID, we want to be able to come back and be able to be active all throughout the town. So. And we're doing the forecasting. Tom and I talk about what we can put out there for the next couple of years. That's why you see the five-year capital plan and what things we're adjusting for this year. And I think you'll see some more things coming up. So that's, that is the report from the board of selectmen for this annual report. These numbers have changed for this year, but during this, this report, the pension board met and there are five members. We talked about when someone puts in a request for pension. We also have had eight employees at that time who have filed for retirement and filed for their pensions. And we, the three selectmen also serve as a WPCA committee. And you did read the report already from the water pollution control authority. So it would be kind of redundant to go over that again, but that's, we talked about upgrades and making sure that everything is running and what, what is concerns, what concerns happened, how to be able to address those immediately. I don't, I think we might have a police commission member on tonight. I see Colleen on earlier.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry to put you on the spot. I just, I just wanted to make sure that if the public had a question about any department or any, by the way, I put on, if you notice on this report, not only are the departments of the town of Plainfield, but all boards and commissions. The reason that is because I really wanted to have full involvement from the town in any board or commission that, that is part of this town really should be able to say, you know, this is what we're trying to do for you as being a board member or a commission member. So that's why I included the board of police commission and all of the boards. So you meet on a monthly basis. You had a meeting last night?
Yes, we did.
And they also talk about not only what issues are for the police department and making sure that they can help and support with their budget and needs that they have at the time, but also help with hiring, also help with, well, you have a traffic authority. And so they listen to the issues of the citizens about traffic authority and they review them and give their insights as to what they'd like to see. And so they work very closely with the police. So I think that's a great thing. The outgoing chief wrote a lot of things here. So there's like four pages from the police. So.
I have one question. On that last slide, it said that the police department is responsible for a request for streetlights.
If.
That was the fire department.
This.
The streetlights as far as stoplights, you mean?
No, on the last one, I said, streetlights.
Right.
Traffic and then streetlights.
Yep.
Okay, just curious.
So I will, I'll ask the outgoing chief what the definition of that was. So I'll get back to you on that. So there's day-to-day operations by the police commissioners. They, I believe, Colleen, you're, you're also with policy and setting policies and helping out to direct the police department itself?
Yes, that's, that is part of the commission's charge.
Are we looking for a new police station? I thought somebody mentioned that earlier.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of either. And we are doing upgrades right now to the cells in the department. We also have been over the past year done upgrades to our communication systems as well.
All right. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
I think we have Irene on here, do we not? And Sonia. Apologize for putting everybody on the spot, but it does help if a resident wants to know who is, who is there. But basically, well, the register of voters is preparing all, certifying all the voter lists and making sure that we have our elections in order. So there are the new things that are this year. They've talked about that and you'll see the online registrations. That'll be coming up with more, hopefully some more information from the state of Connecticut and how we're going to go forward with that. This fiscal year, they have from 7/1/19, 6/30/20, a lot of ads, but it wasn't as much as what you got to the day of the national election. That was a lot. It was 153, I think, in one day. All right. Conservation commission. Is there anybody on for the conservation commission? I had spoken to Wally earlier tonight. They do make recommendations for open space and maintaining trails. We are in further discussion of coming out with a, what was it, Mary Ellen? It was a, I'm sorry, Mary Ann. It was a.
Open space survey?
Yeah, there's just a survey for open space, correct? All right. So that'll be coming up soon. And they talk about forest management and. And they talk about forest management and, uh, continuing to work with the last green valley of October weekends. And, uh, of course, I think their love at this time is the, is the American Chestnut Foundation. And trying to, uh, do, uh, replantings. So that's what they're working on right now. If someone could put their, their speaker on mute, it would help. So we don't. Thank you. There we go. All right. So the planning and zoning commission does meet and, um, I don't know if we have anybody here on for that commissioner. Is Sean there?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay. I, I can't say how much work this, this particular commission does because it's a lot. You are, um, very active in, in supporting and reviewing all of things for, for planning, uh, following the P O C D, plant and conservation development. And, uh, when zoning questions arise, um, we've got a great staff to help you and support you. So they, they do a lot of work. For those people who are interested, definitely, uh, give a look on to, um, whether it's, uh, social media sites that has, you know, the videos of all of their meetings. Uh, there's a lot to learn there.
Yes. And we've been continually active throughout COVID. I don't think we've missed any meetings. Uh, we went to a virtual platform, Zoom meetings and business has been moving in town.
All right. What else we got? And we do have our highway supervisor. Is it John there?
Yes, I am, Kevin.
So John's report includes the staffing that we have here right now, um, and some of the equipment that they have. And they have been working throughout COVID as well. So, um, you know, bravo to them. They've done, I think, a very good job. Going forward with needs of, of the town. And this gives a little background and, uh, information about what they do.
Well, at this current time, we're of course in the plowing snow. And, uh, trying to keep up with the plowing, the sanding, it hasn't been real busy, but, uh, you didn't give enough money to the weather gods to prevent any more snow.
All right. We, we couldn't do that. So Monday and Tuesday will be a little tough.
Yeah. From what they're saying, yeah, at this point. And in the spring, we'll be doing our sweeping and we're cutting the sides of the roads. When we have chances this time of year, keeping the guys busy and it's a typical highway department with a lot of different things going on every day. Like boarding up the school over at the high school or whatever it takes, we get it done.
And for those people who, um, want to know, basically I'll get a call from a resident in the town of Plainfield saying that it's something that they need to have done. I called John and John and his crew take care of it right away. So thank you for all of that. We're working on paving as well. You can see where they're, what the paving has been for the, for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty, uh, nineteen and twenty. Um, you can see that there's no cost associated to that. And there are plans for this upcoming year as well. So we continue that rotation of what needs to be fixed next and we keep going with it. Aldrich Library didn't give me a report, so not in there. I think they did, but I don't, it was included. Unfortunately, it's my fault. Uh, Plainfield Historical Society give us, uh, give us a, a report, uh, now every year. And of course, the same thing with COVID nineteen, the pandemic has caused, so their operation isn't as, uh, open as it usually is. And that's, that's a shame. But they still, um, if you want to reach out to Ruth, uh, if you have something of concern or question, or, or something you want to donate to the, uh, society, that's definitely, uh, something of interest, give her a call please. And we have Z B A. I don't think we have anybody on Z B A here tonight. Oops. I think I hit something too quick. Ag Commission. Is there anybody here from Ag Commission? Jeanie's not here. Sherry, you're here. And we do have the town clerk here. I hit the button again, didn't I? Too fast. Barbie, anything you wanted to say about the town clerks?
Well, the town clerk does, uh, we do a lot of stuff in our office, you know, from dog licensing, bulky waste, hunting, fishing licenses, all the vitals. Um, but I would like to kind of piggyback off of what Mary Ann had said in that, especially during COVID, we're really just focusing on trying to be as accessible as possible to the residents. Um, so we have had some changes in our operating procedures. Um, we've, we've have a new dog licensing system and we're doing a lot of dog licensing through the mail this year. Um, we're doing a lot of bulky waste through email. Um, people can snap a photo of their license and registration, email it to me, we'll send you a sticker in the mail. Uh, we got a new credit card, um, payment system, which is making it a lot easier for people to call in with their payments for their building permits or to pay for their dog licenses or to ask for a, a vital record. Um, so they can pay over the phone and we can mail them, um, the record. Um, I also this year have gotten a grant from the state library to back scan, um, land records, uh, which is really important during COVID because so many title searchers are trying to do as much work as possible from home. Um, and I would like to touch a little bit on the election this year, which was a big challenge for us. Um, we had a sixty-five percent increase in people requesting absentee ballots. Um, and for part of the year, we were down one assistant. So for four months during a primary, we issued sixty-five percent more absentee ballots with just two people. So I'm pretty proud of that. Um, the election went well. We had no real complaints. So, um, that's where we are this year in the town clerk's office.
Thank you very much. I think just about every department in the town hall can, can concur that it is a difficult year. We did our best to use new, uh, ways to actually access people and allow them to have access into the town. Um, such as the Dropbox we put over the tax office. So allowing them to actually put the drops in. Uh, electronic, you've been doing a great job with actually allowing people to be able to call in over the phone and get as many of the licensing, uh, or stickers as possible and helping them out that way. So very good job. And Recreation Department, um, similar where we have, uh, what leisure activities there are, but things we can do and majority of it was unfortunately, but not COVID. And that includes the senior center, the, the, uh, there was a larger group of veterans that were meeting for veteran coffee house over the senior center. Um, they have sent them over here down hall because in a smaller group of thirty, uh, twenty-five to thirty, sometimes we can spread them all out. Um, we've got to keep that number down to the twenty-five and make it so that we can continue. But I think they're doing a fantastic job. Um, helping and supporting each other. So. Uh, we're trying to have more, more activities, uh, which are going to be some virtual ones as you see other municipalities do, uh, through COVID and still trying to keep, uh, connectivity with the public. So, um, again, town hall pool being closed makes it difficult to offer anything currently. And they do the toys for kids program. They were inundated with toys this year. So I want to say thank you to the public. That was fantastic. And as you can see, for the hours of accessibility, um, we still do the meals on wheels. We still offer rides for the seniors. There's also a combination of things are going on, trying to bring things back this year, but a lot of things had to be put on hold, unfortunately. We did have a birthday party scheduled for this, uh, past spring. It was to, uh, remind everybody that this town hall is one hundred years old. It was built in nineteen twenty. So we were trying to have something. Uh, we will, when we get past through the COVID issues, we will continue that thought and have a party anyway. So move forward. I know, Mary Ann, you're here for the Economic Development Commission and you mentioned before what they were doing. I do want to say that the, uh, the business of the year award going to Eastern Connecticut Savings Bank, uh, and continuing on with, um, sharing information about the, uh, the businesses in the area was fantastic. I think that's, uh, still there's, they're still trying to come together and work on things collectively, uh, to try to promote businesses. So I thought that was great. Housing Authority. I don't know if we have anybody in on the housing authority. June, you're on, right?
She is not.
Okay. So they do have the oversight for the Sunny Acres and they had, uh, as you can see below, it says prepared apartments for new residents. They continue to monitor that and, uh, review applications for different people that might want to be coming into there. And they also follow the HUD, uh, process. Uh, what was it HUD or is it actually the housing authority itself works to, uh, monitor the economic opportunities for the low income. We have a board of assessment appeals. All right, Helen.
You're going to have to give me one second while I, I look at this a little bit. It's kind of small. Um, I mean, I can tell you what's going on, um, upcoming. Um, the board of assessment appeals is, um, going to be meeting, um, in March. Um, and also March is for, uh, real estate and supplemental motor vehicles. Um, and they'll also be meeting in, um, September. I don't have those dates in front of me, but, um, if you call the assessor's office, we will let you know, um, the dates that they'll be meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I don't think, is Tom Schwartz on? Or anybody from the ethics commission? And then they have met via Zoom so far. So always ready to serve the town. Building official. You can see that they've been active, even though that, um, you know, part of the year was through the COVID issues. Um, they've been very active and continue to be active. So they had, uh, during that, this report had six hundred and sixty-nine permits issued. And these are some of the permits that they're talking about right here. And some of the larger commercial projects that are, that have been happening as well. There is the Aldrich Library. I knew it was there. Okay. We have also provided, uh, the tempered glass to the, uh, library as well, plastic glass, tempered glass to allow them to continue uh, promoting the library in a safe manner. They've also had call-in days or drop-off days. And they're looking to, like everybody else, get back to a normal schedule. Boy, that happened. Is that my last one? That might have been. That was the last one. There we go. All right. So if there are any questions, we could try to answer now. If you do have any questions later on and you're thinking about them, um, that's fine. You can always call in to talk to us about that.
Hi Kevin.
Yes.
Could you just answer a question for the man with the annex and the budget? Uh, as to when the budget meetings will start so he can look for them and get on.
Absolutely. Actually, there's a budget workshops that are going to be coming up. I know Tom had a calendar list for those. If you would like in our, uh, next, um, next available time, next week sometime, what I'll do is I'll post those up on the website. And that way you have to them and you can see when the, when those meetings are. And we're always willing to entertain discussion on, uh, different topics like that. So we can make sure that everybody knows where, where we are with it.
The other thing, Kevin, is, um, regular board of finance meetings, like meaning we don't necessarily have to wait till a budget meeting to discuss a topic. Doesn't mean that we'll act on it, but I would recommend, uh, also monitoring the agendas that get posted, um, on the calendar for board of finance. Because we can easily put a subject on there saying to discuss with the board of finance, future financial plans, uh, for the annex. I think personally that's a worthwhile, uh, item to put on a future, uh, agenda. So another thing we can consider.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Uh, I just want to say kudos to John. Uh, I actually looked at, I live on Lily Bridge Road. And, uh, and I'm kind of looking forward to that gate going up by the, uh, the railroad tracks, uh, cause I honestly believe unfortunately people are not as intelligent as they should be or aware. So I've, I, I honestly believe that the gate is, is, is not a bad idea. Uh, and kudos to John on his crew. I looked out the window the other night and it was still snowing and I actually saw a plow truck backing up onto La Pearl and then coming down Lily Bridge and going back down there. And that, uh, I thought that was fantastic. Uh, that the snow wasn't as deep enough where cars were barely starting to slip a little bit. But, uh, they're out there, they're out there plowing and sanding. And I think that's fantastic. Uh, I got one more thing for you to consider. I know, I know, I know the town maintenance guys. I know that, you know, uh, they're, they're, they get overloaded at times because there's just a lot of crap around here to take care of. Uh, you had mentioned early on about the trees and the power lines and stuff like this. That, uh, if there's any way that the town could find some way, or, or the finance department could find some way to budget in a little bit more money to go around and start cutting down or trimming up these trees on our own versus trying to get, uh, either ever source to do it or, because I think they, uh, what's it, uh, Asplunder, I think is to pronounce it. I'm not quite sure. Uh, to get those guys to come around because sometimes, uh, when you talk to those guys, because I have a tree in the corner of my property, for example, it's a perfect example. Uh, there's a transformer right there up on the pole. The tree is literally about two feet from it. And there's branches that just, it's a mess during the last storm, uh, the way the tree was. It, it grows solid in the center about ten feet up and then it split off into two and went straight up. Well, the one on the west side, we're talking a tree trunk, probably about two feet in diameter, snapped off from the last storm and fell into my neighbor's yard and knocked out, knocked down his, um, I believe it was his cable and now he has solar panel lines. And they're still on the ground and he eventually cut that tree up. But that, that, that wind could have very easily shifted a little bit and took that power line right out. Uh, and, and, and it just, and it's a transformer on that pole. Take out the power line and transformer and the people in this neighborhood, possibly over on Topo Road or something, would be out of power for a long time to get that fixed. So, uh, I'm using that as an example because it's a perfect example. Uh, to maybe the town, we could, we could find some money somewhere to have the town just go out themselves, assess it. Uh, and then get the, uh, uh, either get ever source, uh, to, uh, oh yeah, go ahead. We can take that down or the, okay, it's okay for the town to do it as long as the, uh, as long as the safety folks say it's okay. You know, something along those lines. Uh, so if we can take those, maybe those funds that are, that are still hanging in limbo that we don't know what to do with, maybe we can divert that to something else. And I understand, uh, that the town maintenance guys, again, kudos to John. I know they get over, I know they get overwhelmed. Uh, but, uh, if that's something we can throw into the mix, maybe add a couple of more tree cutters to the payroll. Uh, and get that taken care of. So we don't have to spend X amount of millions of dollars and getting the power turned back on around here. Uh, or stuff fixed. Maybe we ought to look into that.
Okay. Very good.
Right. Thank you.
I'd definitely like to talk to you, um, after about that as well. So. I'd definitely like to talk to you um after about that as well, so we can follow up on that.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Nope. Um, so this annual meeting also has another function to it. We have to at this time vote to accept or deny when and I entertain a motion. To a uh, to 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 talk about the town department report and the auditor's report. So we'd entertain a motion at this time.
Yeah. That's a tough one.
I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's report and the department head reports.
I'll second that. I'll second a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? All right. Thank you all very much. Um, we'll continue interacting the discussion on some of these items um at a future date, and I know Tom and I will be talking again. And thank you for your input. So all of you have a good night. Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second the motion.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Matt Raiden.
Thank you, Matt. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all very much.